It is nine o'clock, time to conduct the business of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Please silence your cell phone. Cell phone use is prohibited in the Board of Commissioners meeting room. The invocation today is by Commissioner Barbara Acock.
Let us pray, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin our meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Lord, we are thankful for our Wayne County staff who have given their dedication to Wayne County. Pray that the COVID problems will go away, and pray for the health of our nation. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Vice President, Commissioner Harson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Acock. Mr. Harson, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If none, show sign of the right hand.
I did not hear who made the motion. Thank you, sir.
Adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Hennig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a couple of adjustments that we would like to make. Number one would be after the public hearing at 9:30 would be unfinished business, and that would be the discussion of possible night meetings for the Board of Commissioners. And then in our consent agenda, we would like to add a number five, which is the discussion of ABC officers with the Maxwell Center that will be allowed to sign our ABC renewal permits. You should have received a memo of that in our pre-agenda. And then number six is our approval of our SROs in the Sheriff's Department. As the Board is aware, we agreed to fund an additional position plus equipment when the city of Goldsboro pulled back on their SROs. So we haven't done that formally, and this will be done formally along with the appropriate budget amendment for equipment and personnel. And then after consent, we would add new business, discussion of county mandatory mask policy. And, Mr. Chairman, that is all the changes I have at this time.
We did miss the public hearing.
Oh, this is just for the approval of the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as modified. Have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, show sign of the right hand. Okay, now, County Manager's Report, Board of Commissioners Committee reports, we do not have closed session today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go back up to, are we ready for special presentations to employee service pins?
Yes, sir.
And if by chance there's someone here whose name is not called, please let me know. We've been trying to track who is supposed to be here or not, so I do not want to overlook anyone. To begin with, we have Sarah Holland with DSS. Washeah Lancaster, DSS. Akina Williams, DSS. Morgan Heath, Emergency Services. Sabrina Radford, DSS Income. Austin Sutton, Solid Waste. Erin Wise, DSS. Daniel Braddock, Solid Waste. Alexis Cozine, DSS. Ethan Crum with the jail, or Crum, I'm sorry. Shakira Morrison with the jail. Catledge Smith, DSS. Deidra Exum, DSS. Timothy Gray, Sheriff. Sheriff's Office, sorry. Deanna Hudak, DSS. Alejandro Jones with the jail. Janice Lamb with the jail. Lori O'Brien, Emergency Services. Indigo Saunders with the jail. Holly Sutton with the tax office. All right, now we'll move on to our five years. Is there anyone here for one year that I did not call? All right, for five-year pins, Christina Atkinson with the Sheriff's Office. Jasmine Bayford with the jail. Julia Herring with the Sheriff's Office. Lana Linker, Register of Deeds. Ginger Moore, Human Resources. Brittany Bell, DSS. Robert Hines with the jail. Ramon Perez Lopez with the jail. Susie Agri, Reading Literacy Program. Ashley Arnett, Emergency Services. Tracy Best, EMS. Brian Bazell, EMS. Christina Coulter, EMS. Angelene Grantham with the jail. Kristin Mangogna, EMS, Mangogna. Ryan Norman, EMS. Nicole Olive, Tax. Joanne Brickshavana, DSS. And Pamela Walker, DSS. Are there any with five-year pins whose names I did not call? Wonderful. Now we'll move to 10 years. Cynthia Gillette with Health. And that is all for 10 years. Move to 15. Unless, is there anyone with 10 years who I did not call? All right, beginning with Shamra Lancaster with the tax office. Latonya Ann Woodard, DSS. Stacy Whittington, DSS. Rhonda Sue Carter, Facilities. And Richard Lewis with the Sheriff's Office. 20 years? Is there anyone from, well, no. I called them all. All right, our 20-year pin is Jeremiah Stevens with Solid Waste. Our 25-year pins, beginning with Miriam Hatch Torres with the Health Department. Larry Hardy with the jail. And one pin left. This employee's been here 30 years, and his name is Randy Rogers with Solid Waste. Okay, hold tight. All right, if we will, and we'll just give her a pin. Tammy Mathis, and you were with what department? DSS. Tammy Mathis, she's with DSS, 20 years. Thank you so much, Tammy.
Okay, let's move on. And again, we'd like to thank all the dedicated employees that we have with the county, and they are, they are what makes the county run. Okay, Appointments Committee, Mr. Gurley.
Yes, sir. Appointments Committee met this morning, and we present the following. We'd like to reappoint Brent Heath to the GWTA Board of Directors as informed of motion.
I have a motion on the floor from the Appointments Committee to reappoint Mr. Brent Heath.
So moved.
That was a motion from the Appointments Committee. All in favor, show sign of the right hand. Any opposed?
Also, we'd like to appoint Maria Santiago Pines, is that right? To the Wayne County Latino Council, as informed of motion as well.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If none, I'll show sign of the right hand. Any opposed? Thank you. And that's all we have. That's true. Thank you, Commissioner Gurley.
It's a little early, but we have two unfinished, well, that should be before.
unfinished business next. Okay, we got unfinished business. I think Commissioner Williamson wanted to discuss the possibility of nighttime meetings.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Our last Commissioner meeting, Commissioner Foster, he brought up the evening meetings, something that he felt and I feel like is very important for our community to be involved with. And the Board initially didn't approve of having meetings consistently. Some felt as though that it wouldn't draw people in, but I think that, you know, that this Board is a reasonable Board, and I think that one of our Commissioners came up with a trial basis, and I went home and I thought about it. And I thought that a trial basis would be something that is reasonable, and we could see if it was, if it would work to get our community involved in the process of transparency. So I wanted to just bring it back to our Commissioners and see if we can do it on a trial basis, if possible, at least once every three months, to see how it would go.
You're recommending once a quarter?
Yes.
You need a discussion?
Yes, I would just want to add too, we have to figure out how we're going to measure success of that meeting, because the success of the meeting is by who comes and speaks. That's going to be an issue, because then we would say that a lot of these, our morning meetings are successful as well. So if you're going to give them a chance, I say let's stick with it quarterly and, you know, make sure the public gives the public time enough to note that, hey, this is when we're going to have afternoon meeting, because if you just put it out there and then, you know, it's not a set schedule and we only do it for so long, it's not, of course, not going to get a lot of traction, but I think after doing it for so long and the public is very aware of it, that it would pick up some traction, hopefully get citizens more involved. That work during the day that can't come out at eight, nine o'clock in the morning to attend these meetings, and sometimes even watch the meetings, so by the time they watch it on YouTube or whatever, it's done and it's over, and they don't really have time to speak on any matters or anything, because decisions are already made.
Commissioner Williams, I've got a time that you would propose?
From four o'clock, possibly, you know, four o'clock would be the starting time. I think that's, you know, pretty reasonable, it's not, it won't be too late in the evening where Commissioners will be getting home too late in the evening as well, so I think.
But you'll have eyesight problems?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a fair compromise from the standpoint of a trial. I think it's not only a matter of whether or not you have citizens that are actually here as a gauge as to a success. I think there were some problems related to some conflicts of maybe staff, there were some other issues that were there, there were some concerns. And so I think on a trial basis, if we did that on a quarterly basis, we could see how it works and what we would need to do to address those concerns.
Now, would we have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Dawson, public comment? We have a public comment at both meetings?
Correct.
Okay. We got public comment at the first?
No, the public comment, I think, was just at, only at one meeting.
Well, here's the problem. Why have an afternoon meeting with no public comment?
Well, I think that's a separate issue is what I'm trying to say.
I'm glad to see, but I just want to make sure everything is brought out before we just start on it.
Any other discussion? Well, I certainly will go along with whatever the majority of the Board wants to do, but I would like to also, the previous Board tried it a couple of times, the Board before that Board tried it, and I was approached by a former Commissioner of several Boards passed that said they tried it, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to not trying it again, but, you know, the track record right now is not real good for nighttime meetings for this Board, but, you know, times has changed, and, you know, whatever the player of the Board is, I'm good with.
Mr. Chairman?
I would just, I mean, my thing again, once is, I mean, what's, what are we measuring as unsuccessful or, you know, not working? I mean, if you have a meeting and we're all here and we handle the county's business, that's a successful meeting, you know, so I think whether it's in the afternoon or in the morning, I mean, you can't say that, you know, they tried it and it didn't work. I mean, how did it not work? Did they not have a meeting? Did the meeting crash?
I can clarify that, that the meeting was success. The problem was we had no attendance in the audience. I mean, the meetings were fine, but the attendance in the audience, we didn't have any attendance in the audience. I just to clarify that.
Chairman, I would like to say again, I mean, we have meetings here in the morning when we don't have anyone in the audience. I mean, except for employees or staff, so, I mean, I don't understand what would be any different. So, I mean, and I'm never, I'm never going to say that a meeting in the morning was unsuccessful, you know, so I think that the gauge that we're using is not a fair gauge.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, I'd like to make a motion that we have afternoon meetings once a quarter for one year, and reevaluate after that year. So that will be four meetings before we reevaluate. How the County Manager will work out the details as to public comments and so on and so forth.
Mr. Chairman, probably the way to do it is have your first meeting of the month, have that be your night meeting, you know, each quarter, and then that way you don't have to change your rules. You're still at the first meeting, so you do it at the first meeting in January, the first meeting in the next quarter, the first meeting in the next quarter, then you don't have to change your rules on public input.
Good thinking, here.
I would like to add real quick, I mean, I couldn't find a county in North Carolina that has both of their meetings in the morning. There could be one out there, I didn't search every county, but, I mean, I searched as many as I could that would pull up. We are the only county that has both our meetings in the morning. I mean, it's just something to think about, I mean, you know, so, but, thank you.
So there's a motion?
I have a motion on the floor.
Chairman, if I could get a clarification on that, are you setting a time of this meeting?
I would like four o'clock.
Four o'clock. That would be our pre-agenda meeting starts at four?
Yes, sir.
Regular meeting at five? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. How are we, how are our employees going to be compensated for staying after five?
Most people that are here that have to stay are exempt anyway.
They're salary employees, all of them are regular salary employees.
Most are exempt. The only issue I think that we would have is our security out front, that we would have to work with them, and there would be a minimal cost associated with that.
Any other discussion? I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, show sign of the right hand. All opposed?
Just for clarification, this would be the first Monday of the quarter starting in January?
Tuesday.
Or Tuesday, I'm sorry, first Tuesday, starting in January. And we'll do it once a quarter for a year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I probably will be late for all the, but the thing's going to have to be the girls up before, so. Okay, do we have time to do the consent agenda before the public hear?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion? We approved your consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor that we approved the consent agenda. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, show sign of the right hand.
Mr. Chairman, Harson, was that your motion, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll try to speak up.
Now, you're loud enough, but if you're down, and with mask on, I have no idea whose mouth is moving.
Got you. I don't think we can just, I don't think we have the time for the next one before the public hearing. What we got left?
We have just three minutes, sir.
Three minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We have Brian Sigler from Sanctuary here. He was one of the budget amendments on the consent agenda.
I heard my name, but I didn't hear anything else.
I just introduced you, Mr. Sigler, from Sanctuary. You were on the consent agenda for the budget amendment and everything. I didn't know if you had anything to say or anything.
Okay.
If you do, sir, you don't need to come up to the microphone, please, and state your name, so I can.
Good morning. Some of you have met, and some of them haven't. Brian Sigler, Chief Development Officer with Sanctuary Systems. We took over the old Apex Plant in Fremont, about a year ago, a little more.
Well, welcome to Wayne County.
Like Wayne County, like Fremont. As a matter of fact, I'm negotiating right now with an elastics company that's located in Apex to move their operations and let us manage their operations in Fremont.
Oh, great news.
One of the, one of the things that we did when choosing Fremont was we got a little out of step with the Economic Development Board's schedule. We located a facility and started moving in that direction, so there were some items for economic development that because we had done things on our own we didn't qualify for. There was some monies that were available for refitting. The building is 60 years old, needed lots and lots, still does, retrofitting and completion. The state allocated, I think, $500,000, a million dollars, something like that, for reimbursements or as building reuse funds. And we put in our application first for reimbursements under that in March. And my understanding is today we're supposed to be getting a check for that. Between the state and the county, everybody says, yes, you're getting the money. Yes, it's been approved. Yes, there's a check. And every step, I turn around, it's like, well, there's one more piece of, there's one more. The communication between the state and the county and business is sorely lacking. And if it's, if it's a process or a procedure, and it's not made aware from the state to the county or from the county to the business, it sits on somebody's desk. or from the county to the business, it sits on somebody's desk until somebody jumps up and says, hey, where is my money? Uh, and, and I know that there's been a lot of personnel changes in, uh, Economic Development Board. We've seen a couple of people come and go. Nobody told us that they came and went. I was sending emails to, uh, oh, I forgot her name now. Antoine Ed. Doesn't matter. Um, and the emails were going unanswered. And it wasn't until I reached up to her boss's boss to find out that she'd left three or four months earlier. So as, as personnel changes are made in departments that affect business, the businesses to interact with, it would be really helpful for some sort of notification, some sort of system, whether it's email or personal visits. How many people, and forgive me if I don't remember. I know Ms. Akok has been out to the plant 'cause she was in Fremont when we decided to move there. Mr. Haddison's been out to the plant.
How come today you had the announcement that we're into the facility?
Thank you. So please, one and all, do come by. We make all of the masks and, and the one I'm wearing now is actually better than, or equal to, the N95 masks that everybody finds so hard to wear or so hard to acquire. The, uh, the cloth masks that we wear filter about five to 10% of what they're supposed to filter. The surgical masks that are readily available filter 15 to 20% of what they're supposed to filter. And you breathe around them instead of through them. And there's a whole bunch of different issues with masks, whether or not they're necessary at all in the first place. But if you gotta wear one, might as well wear one that works. We make all of our masks from material made in the U.S. And, and that's part of the reason why we're acquiring the, uh, elastics company, bring it to Fremont. And so, uh, we're doing best we can with what we got to work with. It's all self-funded. We don't have a hedge fund that's funding us. Uh, we don't have large government agency that's dumping money into us. It's a family operation. And we've got now 54 people. We're bringing more in. We're interviewing three to five people a week. And so, and most, most everybody we've got comes from, from Wayne County. We bring a few people. We had to bring an individual in from North Dakota because we needed his special expertise. But everybody else comes in local.
Allison, we did, in the consent agenda, we did approve the, the budget amendments today.
Yes, sir.
So that, that was in the, in our consent agenda. So the, the, the check should be coming, correct?
Yes, sir. I've just received a message from my staff. They're cutting it this afternoon.
He's here. Let me pick it up.
So, so with, with respect, Mr. Akok, the, the comment, the check should be coming? I like the answer. The check will be cut this afternoon. If, if I come and say, yeah, I'm gonna take care of the problems that you've got soon. What, what is that? You don't wanna hear that.
Yeah, well, we go through it. You're not the only one. We go through this all the time with the state. You know, the state will tell you they're gonna do something. And they will, but, but don't get in a hurry. I mean, that's just a-
Unfortunately, one of the things that I've found very convenient is the governor's office is only an hour away. And, and they've gotten used to seeing me over there. They, they are a friendly bunch of people and I, I will give them that. With the other capitals that I've had to deal with, the people over here are at least cordial. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, it is 9:30. Uh, the public hearing is now open to receive comments on the proposed voter district plan for the Wayne County Board of County Commissioners. The public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
The mayor.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Parker and I were asked to-
It's already open.
If you'll look down to the right, down the bottom, there you go. Oh, I see, okay. We were asked to do a presentation on the maps. Zoom this up for a little bit for you. And I do have individual maps of the districts too that I was gonna go through as well. As the board, um, already knows, there's six districts that, um, we use, um, six true electoral districts. By statute, every 10 years, once the census comes out, we have to evaluate based off the population changes, whether redistricting is gonna be necessary. Uh, the Board of Education utilizes the same districts that the school board, or that the commissioners do. Um, that was, uh, an agreement from the 90s when the city and the county merged. So any districts that are adopted by the board commissioners are used by the Board of Education. Uh, the current structure, the seven board total with six districts and at large, was adopted in the 80s. That's when the, when your board expanded to seven. That was a result of a lawsuit between Wayne County and AAACP in Wayne County, um, and established to majority minority districts. So that's what we've had in place since that time. Per General Statute 153A dash 22, Board of Commissioners must redistrict every 10 years when there's a substantial inequity of population amongst the districts. Um, that, under current law, 5% is considered a substantial inequity. Carol, did you already hand out the, their handouts for them?
And then, sir, you told me to have those ready.
And I did, um, do a breakdown of the municipal, uh, municipality populations, comparisons between 2020 and 2010. And then on the back page is the statistical breakdown between the proposed districts and the existing districts. I have that on the slide, but I wanted you to have that while we went through the individual maps.
Thank you.
So just a basic breakdown of the 2020 census data. Um, the county population decreased by 5,290. So that made the ideal district size for the Board of Commissioners and the school districts, 19,556 people. It's actually 19,555 and a half, but obviously we can't have half a person. So that's the ideal district for these. Um, I went ahead because I, I thought the board might be curious about the municipality populations. And I pulled the numbers from 2010 and 20, uh, 2020. As you can see, Goldsboro went down approximately about 2,780. My Olive was down 391. And then there were some slight increases and decreases in the other municipalities. Two out of the six, when the numbers came in, two out of the six districts were out of compliance, meaning they were outside of the 5% deviation that's permitted by statute or by existing law. District six was 8.2% overpopulated. District two was approximately 6.4, 6.4 underpopulated. Uh, districts one, three, four, and five were within the 5% deviation. However, District three was very close to being underpopulated. Um, and that's understandable, given the, the, the reduction in the Goldsboro numbers that you see in front of you. Um, the census blocks that were used also did change from 2010. Um, and just for background, when you read district, census blocks are what, the, the units that the census uses to calculate who lives in an area. So when you read district, you can't split a census block because you have no idea what the breakdown is in the block. So by doing that, what staff had to do when they went to go draw new districts, they had to change the lines just because the census blocks moved. Um, so those numbers that I just gave you, they're pretty accurate, but the, the districts don't exactly mirror what, the, the new census blocks don't mirror the 2010 districts. So there's gonna be some changes. Um, and you have that breakdown of municipal populations. The principles that staff used when they were drafting the, when they were redistricting and coming up with the map that's in front of you. Um, equal population, so that's that 5% deviation that's required under federal law. Um, contiguous districts, meaning all districts have to be connected. You can't have part of a district that's over here and then a district separating the two. They have to be, you know, connected. Um, preserve the core existing districts, i.e. change them as little as possible. So we tried to make as little changes as possible. And then avoid impairing incumbents, also known as double bunking, so that the incumbents are not in the same district. For your information, it was also, in addition to the Board of Commissioners, we looked at the school board as well. So the districts that are in front of you that are proposed, no school board member will be double bunked either. All of them are staying in their same district. I did check, there was a appointee to the school board recently, and he still falls within District five. So that would not affect him as well. And we've been in communication with the school board attorney on this as well. As you also know, the census data this year was delayed because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So our timeline, usually we get this sometime in the spring and we have all summer to work on this. Um, as you're aware, it just came back a couple of months ago. So we were really compressed. Um, and then per General Assembly Session Law 2021 dash 56, redistricting must be completed by November 17, 2021. So we're having the public hearing today. Following the public hearing, you can take any action. But any action you take has to be completed by state law by November 17. Uh, the other thing I'll, I'll add before we start going through the districts. In 2013, the voting, Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, um, was declared unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. Usually, we were a covered entity, meaning we had to get pre-clearance from the Department of Justice when we redistrict. That doesn't apply anymore, um, since Section 5 no longer applies. So there's no pre-clearance requirements like there has traditionally been over the last couple of years. Um, so that's a little bit of background. And then I was gonna go district by district. Um, on page two are the statistical breakdowns of each one, and I'll go through those briefly. So District one is what's on your, on your screen right now. The total number of census blocks was 564. Total population was 19,606. That's a difference of 50 and a half people over your deviation or over the ideal district. So your deviation for that is .26%. Uh, you can see in 2010, the difference from the ideal population was over 300. So we were actually close to 2% deviation on that. Then District two, if you recall, this one, this was the district that was out of compliance. It was underpopulated. See if I can get all of it on the screen for you. There you go. It was underpopulated. So, um, when we were drawing this, we actually had to increase the population in order to get it, um, in compliance. Total number of census blocks was 712. Total population was 19,548. So you're only seven and a half below your ideal population. So that deviation is .04%, which is well below the 5%. Uh, most notably on this, you can see, um, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base traditionally was in District six, and that's moved over to two. Um, that's probably your biggest change on that one. District three, which largely makes up Goldsboro, um, was close to being underpopulated. Um, it was within the deviation, but it was very close. So it, uh, we had to find some numbers for that as well. Total number of blocks was 602. Total population was 19,600. That's 44 and a half over your target population or your ideal population. So you have .23%. And I believe the largest change was that boundary between, uh, three and six, specifically within the city. We had to find some populations that had to, two, three from six, since six was overpopulated. District four remained largely the same as did one. 396 blocks, total population 19,517. So you have a difference that's 38 and a half below your ideal district, and that deviation was, um, .20%. The main change is your Highway 70 was usually your, um, your cutoff between one and four. We dipped below and went down below, uh, Highway 70 'cause, uh, District one needed some more people. So had to tweak those census blocks right there. District five was largely within, uh, the regular deviation, so not much was needed to that. Number of blocks was 361. Total population was 19,531. Target populate, or that's 24 and a half below your target population. So your deviation with that was .13%. And finally, you had District six, which was the only district that was overpopulated based off the 2020 numbers. So we had to take people out of six and move them to the other districts. Number of blocks was 389. Total population 19,531. Difference of negative 24 and a half. So that's point 13, yeah, .13%. And if you, if you look at it, five and six actually have the identical amount of population. So you have even populations in five and six now. And just in overall, I'll bring up these statistics so you can see, you also have those in front of you. But you can tell the, the large number of blocks. I mean, there, there's approximately about 500 blocks that were shaved off between 2010 and 2020, the way that they did the census. So that's truly, that, that's the reason why the lines changed is because the blocks changed. Um, so, I mean, you're looking at 3,530 in 2010, and then in 2020, we had 3,024. So, I mean, that, that's mainly your, your reason for the lines changing. Um, I will point out, your deviation is far better than what it was in 2010. 2010, you had a combined deviation of 1.84%. Um, and then, uh, in 2020, you have less than half a percent. So you, you have districts that are almost even in population. They're about as even as you can get them. I believe the biggest difference is between one, District one, and District four, and that would be 80, 89 people. So, I mean, your biggest swing between districts is 89 people. That's a brief overview of, of the district, districts. I'll be happy to answer any other questions. I did prepare a proposed resolution, um, if the board is prepared to act, when the board is prepared to act. I will say the, um, we attached a map to the resolution, but I had GIS go and actually identify the individual six census blocks. So those are those numbers that are attached to the resolution. They actually identified the 2020 census blocks. So that way, GIS, everybody can upload it. There's no, um, confusion as to, you know, which, which district a citizen lives in.
Andrew, can you, um, explain the definition of blocks for tho-, for those that may not understand?
So, um, it's almost easier to see, see it on a map. So when you, uh, the census, what, what they do is, um, so for North Carolina, for example, they break it up into counties. And in each county, they have census tracts. So that's a larger area within the county. Think of those maybe somewhere in the 15 to 20 tracts, I guess, maybe a county. And then within those tracts, there's little blocks. So, for example, in, uh, Goldsboro, it's, it's usually one city block is a, is a tract, is a block itself. Um, that's most consistent. When you get out of the county, they take on some funny shapes. I have no idea how they come up with them, but, I mean, that's how they use to count people. So within that block, the census takers, if you did it online, if you visited, if somebody visited, uh, your house, that's how they count you. So they take everyone in that block, and that's determined to be, and they add all those blocks together. And that's how they come up with the population for Wayne County.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And, and generally, we use those blocks. Your districts mirror the blocks. The outlines of your districts are exactly where the census blocks are. So in an ideal world, they would've used the same blocks that they used in 2010. So it would be very easy, and we can just change the blocks. But unfortunately, that's not how they operate.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you say no one signed up for the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Adjourned the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Public hearing is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, adopt Resolution 21, 2021, 38. That's the resolution we could find in Wayne County's Board of Commissioners That's the resolution we could find in Wayne County's Board of Commissioners and Board of Education, Electoral District boundaries.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank Andrew Drew and his staff for the hard work they put into this. Really appreciate it.
And the GIS staff.
And the GIS staff. Of course, GIS.
And again, thank you, Andrew, and thank GIS, because, you know, we're very fortunate to have a GIS staff that are good at their job, and they go strictly by the book. They don't shave anything, whatever the general statute says, that's what they go by.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment on that, I too want to applaud the staff and all the work that has been done on this. The committee worked on it. I think it was wise of us to take the position of taking our existing map and tweaking that map rather than a total redesign, as some had suggested. I think by doing it, people, the fewest people are going to be impacted. So I just applaud not only the board, but also the staff and their efforts there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on to new business?
Yes, sir. We got, under new business, discussion of county mandatory mask policy.
Mr. Chairman, as we have been seeing on TV and all, and our numbers are starting to trend down, and we put in place a couple of months ago about having the masks be in all our facilities. With the, with the numbers trending down, I would like to make a motion that we remove our mask mandate for all county facilities.
And is that just remove or optional, or?
I'd just say remove, and then that would be on there for somebody's individual, whichever way they want to go.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Yes. I think, you know, you say the numbers are down, that's fine, that's great, but I do think that we are in cold and flu season. I don't know if you know that or not. I don't know what research you've been following and what you've been looking at, but all the data that I read and suggest says the numbers are going to probably spike at some point because it is cold and flu season. People are out getting their flu shots and stuff now, you know what I'm saying? I think it's a, it's a bad move myself right now at this point. I think we should wait till after cold and flu season to pass. I find it hilarious that, you know, after masks was missing, not being worn in this chambers by county commissioners, that we come back with trying to take masks away, period. It's very ironic, but that is what it is. So I say, you know, at the end of the day, we have to look at what's really going on. Like I said, this is cold and flu season. We all know that. It's been that way for years. So it's not going to change, and COVID is still here, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. People are still getting it either way. It doesn't matter. I mean, if you do the research, I mean, the numbers are there, you know what I'm saying? And it's just, I say we take every precaution that we can to keep our employees as safe as possible at the end of the day, because we want them to be able to come to work, we want them to be able to perform their duties, we want their families to be as safe as possible and everything, so.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Just wait.
Yes, I dislike wearing masks. I really, really, really do. And I'm sure most people are uncomfortable with wearing masks, but I think it's a little premature to say, let's remove that policy, because we saw what happened when our, when our staff here, when they got sick. We saw how it was hard for our departments to function. And I just don't, I think it's a little premature to make that decision. I think we should wait a little longer. We know that now they're going to be approving the vaccinations for others. We know people are constantly, they're now getting the booster shot. So I think that we should wait a little longer.
Mr. Chairman, I made a comment to a health provider yesterday and asked him his opinion, and he said it's about time that we, that we do a waiver on mask mandate in the county facilities. I know we're not supposed to go based on what everybody else is doing, and that's not my reason for doing this. I ask people that I have confidence in, and that's what, that's what they said. Like I said, I think the school system may have done the same thing last night. I know other municipalities are doing the same, and that's the reason I brought it to, brought to the board this morning.
Okay. Anyone else have any discussion? Okay, I have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion? Would you repeat that motion, sir?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we remove all mask mandates to all of our county facilities.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. All opposed? Do you get to count, ma'am?
Yes, sir. The vote passed, the motion passed, rather, sir.
That was the only new business that we had?
Yes, sir.
Okay. County managers report?
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I didn't have it highlighted. Public comments, public comment section is open now, and each speaker is limited to three minutes' time. Anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. We have Constance Corum and Sylvia Barnes.
Good morning. And I might just be a minute longer, but I ask that you please indulge me.
Ma'am, the time limit is as far for everyone is three minutes.
Good morning, good morning, commissioners, and to the counts and to the communities of Wayne County. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Constance Beakorm. You, the communities of Wayne County voted for me into this position of Wayne County Register of Dees. I have come to speak to you today to give you a report of my activities. Three members of my staff resigned before I took office. The day I entered, I had no seal nor any other tools to work with for nearly two weeks. Then came the holidays, next two COVID shutdowns, and we were down three major staff members for 14 days, including myself. As of October 29, 21, within two weeks, I lost three remaining staff members to the old regime. I did not realize the negative impact those individuals had over my office. The assistant, who I did not realize had books that I should have been presented to me, but into the office, she held them for her own personal usage and power. And as I found out, the materials are within the binders, she vacated her seat. She vacated her seat. All right. Today, as of June 21, the Office of Register of Dees to date has generated $1.8 million. That was as of June 21. $1.8 million. That's over $400,000 more than last year. My office takes in from 70 to 100 real estate instruments a day. We recorded 4,090 satisfactions, 107 two-page UCCs, 96 UCCs for double pages, and as of September 20, we index through October 1. As of September 29, we have recorded 287 assumed names, 10 assumed amendments, eight assumed name withdrawals. We have issued 4,725 birth certificates, 7,500 death certificates, 1,200 marriage certificates, and we've issued 875 marriage license and performed 380 notary oaths. Issued 15 state expenditures, and I'm not going to continue with that because you're telling me I'm not going to be able to speak, but I am asking that you allow me to speak as a public, as an elected official, that you give me a little bit more time. I have experienced the embarrassment of not having reservations once I receive out of town on two occasions. I filled out the same forms, followed the same process for three trainings. And I thank you for that, Mr. Honeycutt, that those upcoming three trainings have been, have been secured. My vendor, Cott Systems, sent two representatives and provided us three days of training. The Board of Commissioners devised a plan to hire an account specialist, three, to assist me with my reports. I did not ask for this help, nor was I asked if I was interested in the help. That $40,000 could have gone into my budget. In the last three months, almost all reports have been on target. Yesterday, I was told finance would be inputting my bills into the new Muni system. I encountered, and I was confronted with several bills for finance for me to sign off on. I have been in this office for 10 months, and no one informed me these bills ever existed. Some of these had late charges applied to them. How I first learned finance was paying my bills, last week, I was waiting for an updated invoice to come in, per the request of finance, so I could pay it. I called the vendor to, please, sir, I'm asking you to respect me. I'm asking you to please respect me as an elected official and allow me to complete...
Ma'am, this is public comment section.
I, I am not one of your public, I am not one of your department heads, Mr. Honeycutt. I am an elected official. Please, sir, please.
Ms. Corum, your time is up.
And my platform has been to take the Register of Dees to the 21st...
She looks like she's almost finished.
Before you do anything, please make sure that you can't move her legally like that. So I mean, I'm just saying, now, you, we might want to take precaution in doing things the right way. Ms. Corum, you know, he's asked you, will you please?
I am asking that you allow me...
She doesn't want to allow you, so I'm asking you personally to please stop right now at this point, and just let it be said that what it is. Next meeting, ask to be put on agenda to come and speak and to say what you may.
Okay, if you all don't allow me to do this now, I will find another way to get it out. And I apologize.
Ma'am, you can request to be on the agenda, but this is the public comment section.
This is the public comment section, and I am speaking to my constituents.
Yes, ma'am, and the public comment section is three minutes for everyone.
And I am asking all of my public, all my public officials, that you can always call up and request emails to find out the communication that has been going on between me and my, and my staff. And also, I have 25 Platts that I cannot get recorded because I can't get anybody...
Ms. Corum, you are out of order.
...in the office to...
Sure.
I'm leaving, but I'm just trying to let you know to the public of Wayne County, that I am going to the Attorney General to get some information as to how Mr. Honeycutt can force my, force my system to be, force my system to be utilized by them. They've already been paying bills without me knowing.
Ms. Corum, you're out of order.
I'm asking that the community realize and help me do something by contacting the county manager's office and help me get my office back intact. I have...
Sheriff, do your duties, please.
Yes, I am, I am, I am. And I really think this is a bad idea that you are asking me as a local official to move this, in this office. Please, Mr. Pierce, don't do that. Do not do that. I am leaving, I am leaving, but I ask that you respect me as an elected official. You are doing things underhanded, and you shouldn't be doing this. It's not fair to me, and if I never feel y'all to do this, then that's every county...
I'm just following, I'm just following the procedure, ma'am.
I'm not following procedures.
Madam Clerk, you say we have one more?
Yes, sir. That would be Ms. Sylvia Barnes.
Good morning, everyone.
Well, good morning. Tough to follow that, isn't it?
I won't try, believe me. When I signed up, I wanted to speak and ask for the evening meetings, but I think that you all have, have done an excellent job in trying to help us as people that come and sit in your meetings. I realized, I think it was maybe two or three years ago, the NAACP came and asked for evening meetings, and we were not given those meetings. But I just want to say that I am happy that we have those now. And whether anybody come or not, I know there's been many county commissioners meetings that Mr. Lonnie Casey and I was the only two people sitting over there. So I just want to say that I thank you all for taking those steps.
Thank you. And, you know, we try to listen, and, but thank you for your comments. Is that all, Madam Clerk? Public comment section is now closed. County manager support?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things I did want to mention to you. Number one, I think that the relocation of our testing and vaccine site to the old food line building out on Highway 70 has really been a success, and I want to thank this board for their support in doing that. You know, as you're aware, we were trying to get out of bustment, and hopefully that closing of that building will come soon. But the move has gone well. This is from Adam Wolf, who's our vaccine and testing site director. I think I forwarded this email to you, but I wanted to make sure that the public heard this as well. So far, so good. There've been a few bumps, as there always will be with location changes. The site is running smoothly, and so far, no issues. The property manager came by today as well to check it out and was very impressed with the setup and operation. He also informed me that the target date for the air fix was by the 15. So luckily, it's been cool, and we haven't had very much issues. We've had a lot of fans inside, so it really hasn't been an issue with respect to that, which worked just fine. It's not overwhelmingly hot, and I have plenty of fans going, so it's rather comfortable. There've also been several people who've commented on how convenient the location is as well. So again, it's working out well. The hiccups that we had at the beginning, we're moving through, and I just wanted to thank the board for their support in moving to that location. The other thing I did want to mention is make sure it's on your calendar. The State of the Community is November 9 at the Goldsboro Event Center at 11:00 a.m., and Chairman Acock will be doing our presentation on that. And I appreciate him working with Joel, and we'll have a good presentation on activities within the county. Hope you also saw the Chamber Legislative Breakfast has been canceled again, so they're in the process of trying to reschedule that as well. As soon as we're aware of it, we'll make you, make you know. And then also, just remind that on Veterans Day, which is November 11, we will be closed. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tannenbaum.
May I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Tannenbaum, I just want to commend you and your staff and facilities for the move over to food line. It went smoothly, and thank you for making sure that was a priority.
It really was. And again, it's like you said, a lot of thanks to Kendall and his staff, the Health Department. We even got James Wade with the Maxwell Center helping with some of the draping and the pipes, the suggestion of Commissioner Gurley. That's worked out very, very well, so we're just excited, and that'll be a good location and kind of hopefully a permanent location, at least for the next year and a half. So thank you.
Really thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, while we're making comments on that, I would suggest that we do amend the sign, in that the sign may be a little bit misleading. People may think that that is our new Health Department. So you might want to consider putting a vaccine site up there, just to make sure everybody understands that.
As Commissioner Gurley said, that was your ultimate goal.
I saw that, and I said, oh my.
You didn't respond.
I did respond.
So, but we'll make sure that's...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now back to commissioners' reports, committee reports. Commissioner Barbara A. Cupp.
Okay, thank you. On October 25, I attended the Shriners Club for the Crime Stoppers Dinner. Our sheriff was there. Hopefully, he got enough money to do some projects he needed to do, but he hired somebody from the Crime Stoppers, so they had to slap his hand during the meeting. He handled it very well. He confessed. The only problem I had is I didn't win the $5,000. Also, on October 28, the Industry Appreciation Dinner at Walnut Creek was a big success. I want to thank Mark Pope and his staff for putting that together, and I also want to congratulate Seeger's Fence. also want to congratulate Seeger's Fence for their winning the Industry Award for 2021. Very nice function, large crowd. It was great to see everybody turn out, and we had a nice time. And do convey that to Mark and his staff, please. The Tourism Committee, I'm on that. We had a presentation by Rob Wooton, who will be doing the C-35 Sports Complex on Buck Swamp Road. He is looking at, I think, 35 to 45 teams being able to play in a tournament of baseball at that area when it's up and running. So that sounds very interesting if anyone is familiar with that area, to have that in the community. And again, I want to thank our staff for doing a good job on the presentation of the census, getting all that done and properly done. And thank you for that. And that's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Foster?
I don't really have a lot. Just one thing. On our agendas, we have please silence your cell phone. Cell phone use is prohibited during Board of Commissioners' meeting. I would like to know when that was added, who added it, and why it was added, you know, because it wasn't always on the agenda. So get back to me with that at some point, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Berry?
You'll come?
Commissioner Wade?
Thank you, sir. Again, I wanna thank the board for approving the evening meetings. I think that's really good for the community, you know. I'm always about transparency and giving, you know, the community an opportunity to speak on issues that are important to them. Also, wanna scream out loud to our media again, Mount Olive is in need. They have a sewage crisis. It's a problem there. Mount Olive is an important part of this county. When will someone print something pertaining to the help that they need? I'd like to see someone print something pertaining to it because Mount Olive, the municipality, they're working, they're trying to solve the problems, but they're a small municipality with limited funds. So we need to get the word out that they need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the Industry, or WCDA Industry banquet, and I want to congratulate the Seeger's family as well. They're good friends of mine. Been doing business with them for 20-plus years. Three-generation, family-owned business right here in Wayne County. They, and the fourth generation is coming. They've got a, um, being in John's Daddy, Wes put them, put them to work. They're not one that they just come into a position. They were on the line crew when they were coming up, and that says a lot about a business when, that, that shows you how a business runs and, and how it grows. Also, I was speaking with one of our electrician subcontractors, and he informed me yesterday that they are no 200 amp meter bases. And they're not supposed to get any in until December. He said, I could put a 400 amp meter base on them. He said, but can't get those either. People need to realize, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with Wayne County, but it, but it does on the way we cast our vote. We have got a situation that we have, that we've become dependent, and this just not happened overnight. We've become dependent on other countries to provide pretty much everything that we, that we use. And why? Because we all want something as cheap as we can get it. And it goes back to the labor force. And they've pretty much put us in this, this position. But if you, if you look at things now, how things are skyrocketing, they're making it back pretty quick. You know, just, just keep that in mind. I mean, because this country could be in a tailspin real quick, and it'd be hard to climb out of. Also, I mentioned a couple of times the, about the Volunteer Fire Service. Just kinda want to bring that to the forefront again. If you're, if you're riding by some of your volunteer fire departments, you may see a lot of cars there this week. We have County Fire School. If you want to, if you want to become a volunteer for your community, consider being a firefighter in Wayne County. We take all ages. We take all occupations. It'd be something that you'll, it'd be something that'll bless you. Actually, I had one phone call last night myself, wanting to know how they could get on the fire department. And they'll be coming to Belfast tonight. So, but like I said, if you see, if you see a bunch of cars out at the fire department and you're thinking about it, just stop by and, and talk to them. We'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Horst?
Several things here. I'd like to start off with a public service announcement. Folks, as you know, the county owns several properties now from the flood and so on and so forth. If you see suspicious activity, please call the Sheriff's Department. Do not approach cars yourself. We had an incident over a hood drive this past weekend, which turned out to be a serious incident and the Sheriff's Department got involved. But please, call the Sheriff's Department. Don't try to handle things yourself. So that's my public service announcement. Number two, GWTA. Don Willis, the director of GWTA, has done a great job over there. And I just wanna announce that on Veterans Day, veterans will ride free. Okay? And also, he has a veteran half-price policy. That was a pilot program. That's gonna now be a full-time program. So veterans, we do appreciate your service. The hospital, as Commissioner Gurley stated, that the numbers are going down. However, people that are in the hospital and sick are basically still dying, and it's due to not being vaccinated. Everybody that is sick and has passed recently are unvaccinated folks. And the sad part about them, they're basically young people. Well, I say younger than me anyhow. But please, please, if you haven't got your vics, vaccine, if you haven't had your booster, please get it whenever you, you can. And next is, again, with, I'm on board with Commissioner Williams. Mount Olive is doing a great job. It's trying to put a plan together to get bike on, on steady footing, and we need to give them all the attention and the help that, that we possibly can. And my last item goes out to the media, and this is the local media here. Our meeting, last meeting, there were several important items I thought that were discussed, but the only thing I saw that was standing out was an afternoon meeting. Folks, we have more important things than to worry about an afternoon meeting for the media to cover that. Please, please, you know, educate your, your readers. You can do a better job. And again, that's to the local media. From a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot. As, would like to remind everyone about the Veterans Day Parade coming up Thursday, the 11th, to share our respect for our veterans, the sacrifices that they've made. Some of them made the ultimate sacrifice. But we, this is the military community by having Seymour Johnson here, and, and we try to make a big, a big, a big deal out of our Veterans Day Parade. So if you could attend on the 11th, we would appreciate it. There's several events that I've been having to miss here lately. As you know, I'm on the Board of Trustees at the college. We're in the process of hiring the new president when Dr. Walker stepped down to take a job with the UNC system. We've narrowed it down. I say we, the trustees has narrowed it down to, to five candidates. We've interviewed four of them. We interviewed the last one tonight, and we've had a lot of meetings because we want to, we want to make sure that we've, we hired the right president. And we've had, we've, like I say, we've had four interviews and got the fifth one tonight. And this is not gonna be a slam dunk because we have had some good candidates. You know, with Dr. Walker, it was kind of a slam dunk. He, he, he wooed us all over right to start with, but this one, this one's gonna be tougher because we have, we've already had interviewed four great candidates and another one tonight. And then we will meet later on in the week to discuss, you know, what route we are gonna take. And also, I would like to, I guess, apologize to the board for the actions I had to take a while ago. I was just trying to go by the procedures that, that we go for the, for the public comment time. I'm sorry that it, that had to happen, but I've got a job to do, and I try to go by the rules, but I'm not perfect. If, if, Madam Corum would like to come before us at a, at a board meeting, that's fine, but at a public comment section, I was trying to keep it fair to everyone. And sure, sorry to put you in a position like that, but I, I did what I felt was, had to be done at the time. Anyone else have anything?
Do I have a motion? We adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.